The invocation tonight. Yeah, I think he's the... And I... No need me trying to deal with his name. But he's not here. Can you hear me?
No.
Hear me here? Okay. Yes, my mic is on. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, why don't we go ahead and call ourselves to order? And I really thank you so very much for being here tonight. And we hope that as we go through a meeting, that somehow or the other you'll be able to hear, and if you don't, kind of raise your hand and we'll try to speak a little bit louder. Today, we will have a roll call, and I will do the invocation, and I'll ask Councilmember Smith to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, roll call.
Councilmember, Agency Director Jeffra Smith.
Here.
Cilio.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Vasaki.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Hearns.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
And can we go ahead and excuse Councilmember Jeffra?
Certainly.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Done. So we'll officially excuse him. And at that, if you will stand with us, and we will have the prayer and then the pledge. As I give the prayer tonight, I'm sure that most of you have been keeping up with some of what has been going on in terms of shootings and schools and council people and what have you. And if I didn't watch myself, I'd say, "Uh-uh, ain't going to council no more," unless I sit behind some kind of a glass window. But I believe that prayer makes the difference, and I'm willing to trust that and to go with that. So with that in mind, let's pray. Our wonderful, loving, heavenly Father, we do thank you for today. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I thank you for our council members that are present and including Jeffra, who is not able to be with us tonight. We ask your blessings upon us. Give us wisdom that we might do what we need to do in a way that would be overall best for the community and in a way that would please you. Thank you, Lord, for this. In Jesus' name, amen.
Which it stands. For me, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all our world.
And you may be seated. Do tonight prior to hopping into the agenda, the first one, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk to give you a little bit of information about what's going on in her life right at the moment.
I just wanted to introduce the gentleman to my left. His name is Jonathan Leslie, and he is customer advocate for Granicus, and he'll be shadowing me this evening as I learn the process of web streaming and creating minutes in a whole new technological way. I can't even say it, it makes me so nervous. So anyway, I just wanted you all to know that this is Jonathan Leslie.
We appreciate it. Welcome, sir. Okay, I have one other announcement, and this is very precious to me, in that 25 years ago today, this very day, sitting on the dais with us, and not in celebration with his wife, is Vice Mayor Andy Vasaki, 25th wedding anniversary today. Now, what I refer to...
Thank you.
I refer to that as dedication and commitment to your call.
Thank you.
Okay. With that in mind, Career and Technical Education Month, I'm going to call... Let me just give you a little background on this. This really has to do with education as to getting young people and others from education to career, to get involved and to be able to meet the requirements of the workforce. It says in 1991, the City of Lancaster helped establish the Career Prep Council. This group brought together local industry with various educational institutions to assure that skills being taught in the classroom coincide with what our local employers need for employment. And that's been a big thing. Every time we invite somebody to the community, any businesses, they want to know, "Do you have this kind of employees?" So we're very pleased tonight to have with us Ms. Diane Walker and co-partner, who will come forth, and I'd like to present the proclamation to them. I think they stand, am I correct? On this one right here. Oh, you guys, a whole crew with you.
Yes.
You have a good crew, and these people are some represent a product that you...
Are proud of.
You're proud of. Diane, we appreciate you all for the work you do. And I need to tell you this, for as I'm concerned, money cannot buy a good teacher an instruction. It comes out of real hard commitment on your part to make sure. That's big. I never forget the opportunity that I had to touch young people's lives and just to get to turn around and recognize the fact that after you get through your school, you have what you need to go to work. So Diane, we appreciate it, and on behalf of the Lancaster City Council and myself, we'd like to present this to you, and whatever words you'd like to share with us at this time, you can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for this proclamation, and we're accepting it, of course, on behalf of the teachers and students. I'd like to introduce them very quickly, the ones whom I know. Cassie Enriquez, who is a marketing, fashion, and sales student at Lancaster High School.
Gus.
Gus.
Gus, video production at Antelope Valley High School.
And Mr. Paul Weehunt, who is with the screenwriting and video production pathway at Antelope Valley High School. We have Ms. Andrea Villalobos, who's the co-coordinator of the... Or the coordinator, excuse me, of the Information Systems Academy at Antelope Valley High School, and she has two students.
We have Jeanette McLaren, who is our HSA president and head of our robotics team also, and Odalis Fanola, who is vice president of both also.
And I just want you to know that I appreciate the kind words about teachers. I certainly agree with that. Our teachers are wonderful, as are our students, but also our programs would not exist without the strong support of business, industry, and government in our communities, and we truly appreciate what you do for us as well with your support. We have some activities going on this month during Career Technical Education Month, and those include some visitations at local high schools. We visited Lancaster High School and all of their programs this last Friday. Upcoming this Friday, we're going to be visiting at Highland High School. We invite any of you who would like to attend. Just if you need information, you can call me at the ROP in Palmdale. And we're having many activities onsite. The different school sites are doing things to commemorate that. So again, thank you very much, and we appreciate your support.
Take one step backwards and get together like you like each other. Good. On the count of three.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker again, thank you and the team.
Appreciate it.
We have, but I don't think we have anybody here to receive it, but this is... If I can find my glasses where I can see what's up. This is American Heart Month, and I don't know if we have anybody here to receive, but we do want to present this as a proclamation from the City of Lancaster and from the City Council, that this month will be known and recognized and invite everybody to participate in this move to hopefully change some conditions and heart conditions. And we have another presentation, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Jeffra for that.
Since Mr. Jeffra's not here, and he had...
Mr. Cilio, I'm sorry.
He had called and asked me to present his courage and dedication presentation tonight, so Mr. Mayor, if you'd join me on the floor, as well as our representatives from the Los Angeles County Fire Department.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Just a bunch of you guys. Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. When you guys give your handshake, you don't forget.
Ladies and gentlemen, we... So city, and as a city council, we have been promoting a Courage and Dedication Award for several months. I don't know how long we've been doing it.
That's just about August.
And have been recognizing those that have done something above and beyond in our community, and frequently that's for acts of courage. But this is an award for both courage and dedication. And we think about firemen, and we think about things like 9/11 and the courageous acts that went on that day. We look at the brotherhood they have when anything happens in our country, the amount of manpower that we send from this county, things such as USAR and the special teams we have such as hazmat. These guys always step up to the plate and do what needs to be done. And we don't always think about it every day. All we know is, we see a car accident, we get on the phone, we dial 911, and they show up. Somebody's not breathing, somebody's having chest pain, we call 911, they show up. We see smoke coming out of a building, we call, they show up. Every single day, 24/7, 365, 366 this year. I personally witnessed the things that these gentlemen do on a daily basis. I see the results in the emergency room. I see their brotherhood as they take care of their fallen brethren, whether they be firefighters or civilian personnel, nurse educators, paramedic educators. They stand up and they do what needs to be done. So without anything special, any specific instance, something wonderful that we've done, I think we need to recognize them because they are there every single day, 24/7, when we're awake and we're asleep. For that, we should say thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate that for these men. There's no way we can say enough or do enough. I'd like to share, this is very personal to me, very, very personal, and I don't know if any of you were here. That was six years ago. On the back porch of my son, who passed away, six years ago on the 27th of last month. You guys, whoever it was, absolutely stood with me through every bit of it. They wanted to make sure that I was comfortable, because I knew that my son was gone, and they gave him mouth-to-mouth and everything else they could to bring him back, and he didn't. But I guess there's no way I'm going to ever be able to repay you. You and whoever else that comes on after you will reek the benefit of what those gentlemen did for me on that evening. So Chief, we're going to give this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Hearns, Councilman Cilio. It's kind of hard for us to stand up here and, you know, accept awards for doing the things that we really love to do. This is just part of why we hired on the job. We've got some of us that have lineage with fathers and grandfathers, uncles, so on, that came up through this profession, and we're just trying to carry out some of the things that they did. And the new people that have... Nobody that have been on before us, they found that it's something that they just wanted to do, and that's why we're here. Represented here are members of Fire Station 33, which is stationed just right over here, quarter mile away. It's just... It's a small representation of the amount of people that we have here in the valley that do the same thing. So, you know, why it's hard for us to receive an award, you can understand why, because there are plenty of us that do the same thing all over this valley. We do appreciate it, and...
33's still busy.
And I was just about to say that. We do have the... I want to say fortune, but we have the distinguishment of being the busiest fire station in the county of Los Angeles and one of the busiest in the nation. So that's something that we, you know, we definitely pull true to our hearts. You know, we try to get out there and then treat everybody the same way as we would treat people if we had the least amount of calls per year. But it's just something that we love to do, and we thank you on behalf of the County Fire Department for the award.
Thank you, sir.
How would you like to do this? If I can have the mayor, Cilio on the captain, and the chief in the middle, and... Hold that. And then I need a gentleman, two on each side, any two, tallest ones in the back though. And then the tallest ones, put your heads up in the air. You step right up here. You step right up here. I'll do this as quick as I can.
Then he said the tallest one.
Okay. So I can see all the faces, so that means the camera will...
They were on a call.
They get to be on their knees in the front row. You know, like a sports picture. Oh, let's see this face a little hard. Be able to see your face. There's a guy in the back I can't see at all. Everyone has to be in the picture somehow. Okay. Now let's see if I can get you. Let me try again. Just to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so real much. Told you about that good chance to meet.
Oh, Scott Francis.
Thank you. I didn't know if you guys had any short words you'd like to say to them while there. Okay.
He said it well.
Okay, thank you very much.
What else is there to say, except I hope we don't need you?
Exactly.
Okay, proclamation, courage... Hey, looks like Ms. Brewbaker. Are we there? We ready for that, Mr. City Manager? Ms. Brewbaker, you're on. Code Enforcement Presentation, Housing Director. And let me just make mention while she's getting ready that on Saturday at the Central Christian Church, you need to have seen the team that came from City Hall that were there, and they were doing business, they had everything laid out, and anybody who wanted any information, they could get it right there. And I was able to say to the people, "If you need information, call 723-6000." I couldn't remember the exact number, but anyway. So Liz, thank you so much, and you're on.
Okay. When the city talks about itself to the outside world, we naturally emphasize the positive. We show compelling pictures of poppies, happy families, and thriving businesses. These are all true and accurate pictures of Lancaster, but they don't show the entire story. These images portray the best that Lancaster has to offer, but unfortunately, there are also challenging parts of Lancaster that require our attention and concern. In these pockets of our community, public safety is at risk and community pride is fading. We cannot afford to ignore this reality. The role of code enforcement is to see that the policies enacted into municipal code by the council are carried out within the community. Our work has profound beneficial effect on the quality of life for residents and property values within the community. Code enforcement intercepts and seeks to prevent community decline. When the negative image of an area starts to outweigh the positive perceptions, law-abiding citizens abandon neighborhoods, leaving behind those who care less about the community. Businesses choose other places to grow their enterprise, and potential investors seek other opportunities. Code enforcement's work covers a wide range of activities, from enforcing zoning laws and land use policies to ensuring that residents care for their yards. We also see that city licensing requirements are followed, including those for rental housing, tobacco resellers, massage establishments, taxis, and towing services. We investigate reports of unsafe and unsanitary housing conditions, follow up on abandoned vehicles and properties, illegal ducking, and enforce mobile home regulations in 30 parks with over 3,000 spaces. It is no small job. Our 13 code enforcement officers, one code enforcement aide, and two administrative clerks handle an open caseload of over 10,000 violations, spreading across the 93 square miles of the City of Lancaster. Many of these violations have occurred within the city's core, where the bulk of older neighborhoods with rental housing lie. To respond effectively, we've divided the city into districts that are assigned to specific field officers, so they can see an issue through from start to resolution. You can see based on color coding where the bulk of the problems lie. In the red areas, I believe it is 1,000 violations per neighborhood, and in the orange areas, it's 600 violations per neighborhood, and then thereon it goes. The Department of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization has made a lot of progress in these troubled spots with the North Downtown Transit Village Project, Northeast Gateway Corridor, and the Low Tree Neighborhood Project area. Here, neighborhoods are getting a second chance thanks to code enforcement, coupled with the city's revitalization efforts. Code enforcement and law enforcement are very two different weapons in the city's arsenal to fight crime. Both are needed, both are effective. Code enforcement focuses on housing, zoning, building, and health codes, and seeks to preserve the quality of our living environment. Law enforcement regulates security, morality, and safety. Both work to curb undesirable behaviors that are detrimental to the community. The two work hand-in-hand to reduce illegal activities and create a better quality of life for our citizens. Shown here is a graph representing the code enforcement process. We start out with a proactive program to inform residents and businesses of their responsibilities through public outreach. For responsible citizens, this is often enough to get them to tend to a neglected lawn or remove an inoperable vehicle from the driveway. Whenever we encounter a problem or receive a complaint, we investigate the issue within a week. Once we determine the property owner and nature of the violation, the code enforcement officer determines the most appropriate process for obtaining compliance. Most times, the issues can be resolved with nothing more than a written warning. A warning is not issued unless a violation of the code is observed. Sometimes citizens bringing the issue to our attention are frustrated when it appears that we don't follow through. Our goal is 100% compliance, but if there is no violation, then we recommend action to keep peace in the neighborhood, but cannot pursue the matter further. In those cases where there is a flagrant disregard for the law, even after it conveying warning, we pursue administrative, civil, and even criminal proceedings to compel compliance and punish violators. Out of the over 10,000 cases handled in 2007, over 90% are resolved with a warning. About 9% required issuance of a citation, while only 1% needed to be referred to a prosecutor to obtain compliance. We think that speaks volumes about the effectiveness of our staff in solving problems. In recent years, we've beefed up code enforcement substantially and are working our way through to resolution on over 5,300 violations currently open. During the course of a day, a code enforcement officer has to deal with dozens of different types of problems, the most prevalent being junk, trash, and debris, and landscaping issues, things that degrade property values and get neighbors up in arms. Despite our Herculean efforts, the effort, the outlook for the near term is challenging as the mortgage problem is bringing foreclosure issues back into the spotlight. Abandoned homes are ripe for vandalism and can harbor criminal activities. Unattended pools become health and safety issues, while left-behind trash and debris is blown through neighborhoods or dumped in vacant lots. Newly homeless families may find shelter in RVs and cars, and may try to sell possessions at impromptu sales around town to make ends meet. I'm not trying to paint a discouraging picture, because we are making remarkable progress after too many years of underenforcement, but if we are to succeed in maintaining the quality of life we desire for our city and its citizens, code enforcement must remain a priority. We must work hand-in-hand with law enforcement, public and private charitable organizations, as well as our own concerned citizens to resolve these challenges in a cooperative and proactive fashion. Together, we can make positive change in our community. This is positively clear. Thank you for your time and attention.
Very well. Questions?
When...
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, when you're talking about the one... Up to 1,000 violations in a neighborhood, are we doing... Are we giving violations for such things as leaving the trash cans in the front yard and stuff like that? Are we enforcing that type? What types of... I mean, are we talking big violations here?
We're talking big. We sorted out for the graph, we took out trash cans in public view, and we have a staff member that handles that primarily from the desk. And in handling that issue too, is also that individual calls to obtain... Calls people why they don't have trash service. So that's not counted here. That's... We separate that out. That was one of the benefits of having the software for CompKade approved, is that we can sort violations out and then report more important information about things.
Right, okay. And my second question would be, the lawn ordinance. We're dealing with... I understand that in the City of Palmdale, they don't do non-green lawn enforcement during the winter months. Do we do that?
No. Our Lancaster Municipal Code, a violation is when it is dirt, weeds, and vegetation. So that to cite somebody for a brown lawn during the winter is not in our Lancaster Municipal Code.
Okay. And the only reason I asked that is I figured that was the case. You know, sometimes you get people that come to us as council members and complain that they were cited for their lawn not being green in the winter, and obviously, it's because there obviously were other issues such as weeds and stuff like that. So thank you.
Right. And if somebody feels that they've received a violation and that they don't think it violates the Lancaster Municipal Code, they can call. We have the photograph, we can pull it up and discuss with them... We can pull it up and discuss with them how we can resolve the situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Good job.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
One thing Elizabeth mentioned, I want to reiterate, that the system that we have in place to monitor a lot of these violations is very good. There's a picture of most violations so that the management can call up at their, any address, any violation, and see the situation as well, and go out there if there's any question.
Excellent. Excellent. I don't know what's happening, but if it needs to happen, let it happen. Oh, my goodness.
And I'll bet she's watching this live for the first time, too, and enjoying every minute of it. Oh, boy. Well, if you are, honey, I love you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're not going to make him read the card, are you?
What am I?
Would you like to read the card? Ladies and gentlemen, I don't know how you feel about marriage. I kind of lost mine by not being able to balance things out thirty years ago. And so I honor marriage today with a very strong passion. And twenty-five years, Andy, we're proud of you. I certainly am. We thank God for your marriage and you and your wife.
This is twenty-five years, I love you, from Donna, of course, my wife.
And we're not going to let him cry up here either.
Thank you, sweetheart. I love you. I know you're watching, too.
That is a very wonderful thing, and it's something that I cherish, and I take time out throughout my church and everywhere else I go to encourage young men not to let their work take them over. That happened to me. Edwards Air Force Base stole my wife. I let it happen. It's really how it happened. Okay, do we have, Andy, anything else?
That's good for tonight.
Any items to be removed, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Do we have any requests for agendized items?
Not on the consent calendar, no, sir.
Okay. And you'll call those items up when we need to. Okay, we're at the point of the agency action consent calendar. We have one and two.
Move adoption RCC one and two.
Second.
All right, please cast your ballot. It is unanimous and is so ordered. Now we have the council action, and that's item number CC1 through 22.
Move adoption CC1 through CC22.
Second.
All right. And that is unanimous and is so ordered. Takes us then to public hearing number one, and I'm going to declare that the public hearing is open, and I'm going to ask for the staff to do a report, and that's Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Hearns, and council members. This evening, we have before you a proposal to annex two properties into the drainage maintenance district. These two properties are, both of them are going to be developed as single-family residential properties, but in varying numbers. The property owners and the developers of these properties have approached the city, identified that there will be improvements to the drainage system that will be constructed as part of their development, and have requested that the city assume responsibility for maintaining those improvements in the future. The property owners, developers, have paid the necessary fees to allow us to go forward with those annexation actions, and the staff is satisfied that everything is in order, recommending to the council that the adoption of Resolution 08-115 is appropriate and will allow us to process the annexation actions. That is our recommendation to you this evening.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen, for clarification? If not, City Clerk?
No speaker cards and no communications.
Okay. Gentlemen, if, if, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So ordered. And now it's council discussion and action.
Move adoption Resolution Number 08-15.
All right. That is unanimous and is so ordered. That takes us to public hearing number two. I'm going to declare the public hearing open, and again, Mr. Williams.
Thank you again, sir. This action, public hearing number two, is to take action to annex the same two properties acted on in the last item. This one, however, is to annex the properties into the Lancaster Lighting Maintenance District to provide street lighting and traffic signal support. Again, fees have been paid, necessary documents have been submitted, staff is satisfied that we are ready to move forward with these annexations with the council's approval. That approval would include adoption of Resolution 08-16.
Any questions for clarification? Any speaker card?
No communications and no speaker cards.
With no objection, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it to the council for discussion or action.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 08-16.
And that takes us now, and by the way--
I need, I need one more vote. I'm sorry.
That was me, sorry.
There we are. There we are. Unanimous, so ordered, takes us to public hearing number three, and I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Williams.
Once again, sir, this is action proposed to annex the same two properties, this time, though, into the Lancaster Landscape Maintenance District. There will be improvements made. The developer owner has requested that the city maintain them, and in exchange for that have requested that they be annexed in such that fees can be collected to pay for those services. Staff has received the necessary payments and fees, as well as assigned documents, recommends to the council the adoption of Resolution 08-17.
Questions, gentlemen, for clarification? If not, any--
No speaker cards and no communications.
Okay, no objection, we'll close the public hearing, and it's open for council discussion or action.
Move adoption Resolution Number 08-17.
Second. Let's go on from Andy. It is unanimous and is so ordered, and that takes us to public hearing number four. I will declare that the public hearing is open, and here is staff report this time from Mr. Ludick, Brian Ludick.
He's not here tonight, so I'll be giving his presentation for him. Mayor Hearns and city council members, before you is a resolution establishing conditional, conditional use filing fees for alcohol beverage establishment. On January twenty-second, the council took action to introduce ordinance number 896, which amends the zoning ordinance requirements for alcoholic beverage establishments. The provision of the ordinance requires that alcohol sales establishments obtain approval of a conditional use permit. Due to the different circumstances and levels of effort required for these conditional, for processing the conditional use permit, the council approved a policy in conjunction with the introduction of the ordinance. The attached resolution contains the necessary findings to establish the filing fees. Staff recommends adoption of the fees as listed in Exhibit A. Therefore, staff is recommending adoption of Resolution Number 818. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this matter.
Sylvia, thank you. Thank you so very much. Questions, gentlemen?
The only thing I don't see in the staff report is the fee to apply for a temporary alcohol use. It says it's a director's review, but we don't have that on our matrix of what that would cost.
We haven't established that yet. We're in, in the process of formulating the time that it'll take to process special events or process. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, where are we now? We were open. Any other questions? Not? A city clerk?
No communications and no speaker cards.
Okay, no objection. We're going to close the public hearing, and city council discussion or action. I'm going to, can I do this one?
Sure.
I'll do this one. Ms. Donovan, I want to, I want to give you that one. I recommend or offer a motion to adopt 08-18.
Second.
Okay. Would you please cast your vote? Unanimous and is so ordered. Did I miss something? Or am I getting close to the end, or did I miss something?
You're getting close to the end.
I'm getting close to the end.
Believe it or not.
City manager, we're going to come back to you.
Yes, sir. The city attorney is going to make a report, an oral report at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, as you're all aware, the district attorney's office sent a letter to the city council addressing the Brown Act violation that occurred on November sixth, two thousand and seven. I have read that letter over several times, and I have to agree with the conclusions reached with respect to the meeting, the special meeting that was held on November sixth. That is a situation that will not occur again, and I would renew my commitment to the city council to make sure that that does not happen. And we'll review each of the agendas to make sure that we are in full compliance with that and monitor meetings as they go forward to make sure that we are in compliance with that. In addition, they've asked us to provide them with copies of agendas and minutes for the next six months, and we've already started that process. City clerk has provided the district attorney with copies of tonight's agenda, and will provide the minutes when those are available. There is one matter, however, that I think deserves a separate comment in the letter. There is a suggestion on page two of the district attorney's letter that the decision to terminate the city manager was likely the result of a serial meeting. That conclusion is based on a misunderstanding of the facts. As set forth in the district attorney's letter, they based that conclusion on three points. First, they claim that there was no entry in the minutes of the meetings before or after the November sixth special meeting concerning the, quote, "termination, disqualification, or departure of the city manager." Second, they then conclude that New Business Six, which was added to the November thirteenth agenda as an emergency item, was adopted by unanimous vote as an emergency item on November thirteenth without having been, without there having been any prior public action reflecting the departure of the city manager. And finally, they conclude that the only, the only conclusion that can be reached based on comments made at the November thirteenth, two thousand and seven meeting, they actually, in the letter, referred to the November nineteenth meeting, but I think that was simply a typo. And they're referring to the comments made by council member Cilio concerning the activities of the facilitator and his, and the facilitator's meeting, with each of the council members claiming that that was, that constituted a serial meeting. With respect to the first two points, the district attorney apparently missed the lengthy discussion at the beginning of that meeting that's reflected in the minutes, and during which Mr. LaSalle attended his resignation, and that resignation was accepted subject to the terms of the separation agreement by a three to two vote of this council. That all occurred at the beginning of the meeting, and so they, they missed that. The MB six was added after that occurred and was later voted on by the council as unanimous action. That does not mean that there was a serial meeting. With respect to the discussion of the activities of the facilitator, I think if you read even the paragraph that they selected out of the minutes concerning the activities of the facilitator, you'll see that there was a clear indication by Mr. Cilio that the exit strat, developing the exit strategy, was a concept that was never discussed by the council. The facilitator scheduled meetings with each of the council members, with Mr. LaSalle and with me, and he never came back after that to each of the council members to discuss what was said by any other council member. Such, such an effort does not constitute a meeting within, let alone a serial meeting, within the provisions of the Brown Act. The Brown Act does not specifically deal with or define a serial meeting, but it does contain provisions that define the term meeting, and that prohibits a meeting of a majority of the council in person or through direct communication, personal intermediaries, or technological devices to develop a collective concurrence as to action to be taken on an item by the members of the legislative body. It excludes from that and specifically exempts meetings or conversations among individual council members and a third party. The provisions of Section 54952.2 were addressed at length by the Court of Appeals in a case called Wolf versus City of Fremont that was decided in two thousand and six. The court in that case made it very clear that the term or phrase "collective concurrence" requires not only that a majority of the council share the same view, but also that the members have reached that shared view by interaction between or among themselves, either directly or through a personal intermediary. None of that occurred in this case, and their basis, going back to the first two items, that all of a sudden there's this New Business Six that comes, comes before the council, that that's a clear indication that they, that you had to have had a meeting before that to come to that agreement, is, is just unsupported by the facts. I will provide a copy of this memo. I've provided a copy to Ms. Aldrich to provide to the press. I will be providing a copy of the memo with a cover letter to the district attorney's office tomorrow, and in that letter, I will commit on behalf of the council that we will continue to uphold the, both the letter and the spirit of the Brown Act going forward from this, this point. That would conclude my remarks.
Questions, gentlemen?
I would just like to concur with Mr. McKeon. He accurately reflected my statements that I made that were quoted in the DA's letter, that my concern was about the actions of the facilitator and that there was no council concurrence, and that's what, what caused that discussion. I'm not going to delve into what those concerns are, but Mr. McKeon did accurately state my comments on that date.
Appreciate that, Mr. McKeon. For whatever it means, I don't know if you needed to include it or not, but for whatever it means, on that same day of November sixth, I came down from the chamber, from upstairs, and as the people were getting ready to leave, and did make a statement to them what had happened, and that on November thirteenth, that they would have an opportunity to hear everything and also make a statement, or ask questions, or whatever they wanted to do, which we did, which we did.
I appreciate that, that, however, I don't think that excuses the violation.
All right. Any other questions? Comment?
Yes.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah. In reading the article that Mr. Wilson wrote in the Valley Press on this, I know that Mr. Wilson and myself and Dennis Anderson were at a meeting at the Valley Press, and we had a lively discussion about a number of things. And as lively conversations go, things go back and forth. Mr. Anderson emailed me, and we discussed further and clarified, but Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson was not part of that, that email, so I'd like to clarify now because the, my quote or paraphrased quote in the newspaper was inaccurate. First, I'd like to say that the Brown Act is written and was written to protect the public's access to an open meeting and its collective decision-making by its elected officials. And I agree with that a hundred percent, and I think that we should-- And I agree with that a hundred percent, and I think that we should follow it strictly. Uh, there was a comment that when Mr. Anderson and I were talking about the exclusions to the Brown Act, and we had a conversation back and forth, and I had made a statement, which is accurate, that the exclusions to the Brown Act are not there to protect the public. The exclusions are there to protect the person that the conversation is about in closed session. And in this case, it was to protect the personnel record and the integrity of Mr. LaSala. So even though the newspaper said, uh, in the article that I said it was not there to protect the public, it had to do with the exclusion and the exceptions in closed sessions. And those are to protect the people that the personnel issues are. Elected officials have no protection under the Brown Act. The Brown Act is not there to protect us at all. And as the city attorney can say, as soon as any of those exemptions are waived, there is no more closed session, and it has to go out in the public. So we have no, no protection. And so my comment was, and still has to do with the protection of personnel issues.
Very good. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you so very much, Mr. McEwen, for that clarification. And hopefully that will, uh, be published in, in the way that you've written it, and I think it will help to solve a lot of minds that, uh, was otherwise thinking. Okay. City clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This portion of the agenda is for any individual to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. If you'll, please fill one out. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on any item that is not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. You have three minutes in which to address your concerns. We ask that you be respectful of the time limit to allow other people their three minutes. When you come up to the podium, you'll see two lights. The yellow light will come on when you have thirty seconds left, and the red light comes on when your three minutes is up. And with that, we have three speakers at this point. And our first speaker is Ray Shavira, followed by Tanisha Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience.
Mr. Shavira.
I want to thank you for the two alcohol-related items that you passed earlier on in the agenda. Pursuant to the conversation that you and I had, Mr. Mayor, at, on the occasion last Thursday of the receipt of certificates for the general plan advisory committee twenty thirty, uh, I, I spoke to your traffic engineer this afternoon, Michelle, uh, Contral, with respect to the following item. And with this one, I'm wearing two hats, as chair of the AV alcohol tobacco, uh, the drug policy coalition, and as president of our Sherwood Mobile Home Park Residents Association on the east side. With respect to, uh, Tupac's liquor store and the trap bar located just this side toward the city of Thirtieth Street and I East, may I suggest that, uh, somewhere along the line that a necessary left turn lane be contemplated and established? It's not every day that an alcohol outlet in town opens at six o'clock in the morning, dark or not, to sell alcoholic beverages. In my drinking days as a teacher forty years ago, I saw a six o'clock opening liquor store, and a couple of occasions I almost broke the windows to get my fix before I went to class. I don't know how many other people are in the same situation, but I know we only had one traffic fatality within the past year at that location. The flowers are there. I would hope that, given the alcohol ordinance that you just passed effective next month, that appropriate due diligence and scrutiny be, uh, applied to that part of town. Not only is the traffic inappropriate because of the left turn lane, and frequently traffic departs inside, has to back up into the first lane of the eastbound, um, lane. On several occasions, I've almost hit someone in front of me who had, had to make a quick left turn to park inside. I know their grandfather didn't in Morse in terms of previous laws and regulations, but I would hope in the future that that part of our town, which is highly trafficked, would be carefully looked at and improved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shavira.
Tanisha Stewart, followed by David Paul.
Good evening. I would like to address the city with, um, a severe problem. I'm trying not to cry.
It's okay.
Right now Lancaster, I guess the state of California is facing a big situation with, um, homeowners losing their homes. And that's a major factor for the tenants who are living in the homes who are paying their rent. And you have the banks coming in, and they're evicting the tenants out. And if you don't have the proper time to relocate, you're homeless. And this is something that's affecting Lancaster. And it's affecting myself and my daughter and a lot of the people that I know. And it's really, really hard if you're not familiar with the, um, protocol or procedures to get someone to hear you out about what's going on in Lancaster, I guess the real estate market altogether. But I, I would like for somebody to look into the, uh, issue of, uh, either a time limit or some type of proposal for the tenants, so we can have a timely fashion to, to move out, and there won't be abandoned buildings and things of that nature happening in Lancaster, because that's the whole point of why, you know, there's abandoned buildings and the homelessness is raising up in the community because there's nowhere to go. And it's not our fault that we are tenants and we're paying our rent, and the homeowners are not doing their part. And basically, I just want somebody to just look into the matter and, um, come up with something, an idea, proposal, or something to address the situation before it gets worse.
I have two questions. First of all, thank you for, you did pull yourself together and you were able to say what you needed to say. But the other question I have is, did you know about, or were you present on Saturday over at the Central Christian Church?
No.
You don't know what went on over there?
This has been a battle that, um, people in my community have been addressing to one another, but like I said, just asking questions, asking for help, and, you know, at this point, somebody said, you know, just go up to your city council and see what they could do. And I'm the only person here, as you can see, addressing this issue, but there's a lot of people in this situation. And they don't know where to go or who to address for help.
Ms. Rebecca, is that, could you at least talk to her for us?
Yes.
That's the lady you wanna talk to to see what, uh, what can happen. Now, I promise anything other than she will talk to you and find out what can be done, if anything.
Thank you.
Anything from you, gentlemen? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. We're sorry about that.
David Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
Been some beautiful weather. I've been trying to feel better, uh, get inspired, and I think this young lady's problem illustrates the need we all have to get along so that we can solve these problems. And, uh, I, for one, would like to get all this stuff behind me. Uh, Mr. McEwen, thanks for reading that. Uh, we're working through this process. Uh, you're growing on me. I appreciate it. Captain Dealey, I, I wrote a letter to the editor. It wasn't published. It was sometime after the first of the year, and I was a little down about the fact that when you had your presentation here and you got your award in December, the room was kinda flat. We didn't see the same enthusiasm we saw for the firefighters that day. So, uh, I wish you that, uh, good feeling. And, uh, tonight I wanted to talk about that council shooting back east. That's a crazy thing, and I always felt a little safer with Councilman Jeffra up on the dais, 'cause I knew he was packing. And, uh, I, I'd like to see some sort of ordinance where the city manager straps or something. You know, I'm, I'm just kidding around. It's a terrible situation, but, uh, I know I'm in good hands here. I'll tell you a story about security that, uh, I'll just share. We can all go home. At the AV Warren gangs and crime, um, I was very excited to get to meet the sheriff, 'cause I wanted to put my human accountability project in his hand. And, uh, after that long meeting, I waited and I got up on the stage, and I was about the fourth one there, and this large gentleman cut in front of me abruptly, and, uh, I says, well, that's all right, fourth, fifth, doesn't matter, when I talk to the sheriff. But, uh, all of a sudden, this guy gets his turn to talk, and he just goes off on Nazi storm troopers and all sorts of stuff. And I started looking around, and anyone who knows personal security knows that there's this zone in the middle called the Ruby Zone, and if you let a guy get in there, a knife, a gun, anything, can inflict a mortal wound. You just don't want that open. So I stood there and I watched this, and the guy got louder and more abusive. And these are the thoughts that ran through my mind. I said, who's got the sheriff? I'm looking around. It was a little late, you know, early, impromptu. He was up there. The tail wasn't in place. And then I thought, I have got to let the sheriff handle this. And then I thought, well, if this guy gets anywhere out of control, I'm gonna have to knock him down. And then I thought to myself, I would kinda like to knock him down. And then I said to myself, who's got the sheriff? So this went on for far too long, but, uh, I was there and I witnessed that, and I saw the sheriff the first time at Pierre Bane's funeral. And the man is enlightened, and it was a real testament to watch him handle people. And, uh, I was just proud to be there that moment and, uh, stand by him and cover him. And, uh, that's all I'd like to say tonight, and good night to everybody.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Gary Burgess.
Evening, Mayor and council, councilman.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, I've been up here enough. I shouldn't be nervous. I'm really nervous, so. Not that you worry about that. But anyhow, I wanted to comment on Mr. McEwen's comments. I made some statements to some people, and I've talked to a lot of people, and the consensus of opinion is that he should be fired, but that's not gonna happen. And I, you know, there's different inputs that, and everything. And I'll just say, and I probably change my mind, I don't believe in beating somebody to death forever about something. So, Mr. McEwen is a trained professional. He's a college graduate. I haven't seen his law degree on a office wall or anything, but I'm, I know that he's, or feel certain that he's a graduate of a law school. He's got a lot of experience. He should have never let that situation develop to the point that it did. All of it's hindsight, but there was enough foresight that everything was going on when you came downstairs, and we knew ahead of time it's gonna be held, that medium is gonna be held upstairs and everything. But anyhow, this situation has done nothing but contribute to Lancaster being kind of a joke sometimes, because, uh, when it comes down to the fact that the district attorney has to get involved to make the city follow the laws and the rules, what do you expect of the rest of us? You know? We got Captain Dealey and the fine staff at the sheriff department to correct us when we are errant in our ways, and we pay fines, and then if we're smart, we'll straighten up and fly right. So it, it seems the sad state of affairs that when the district attorney has to get involved and then we say, or city attorney says, well, yeah, we got caught with our hand in a cookie jar. That's the way I look at it. Okay, now, now we'll straighten up and fly right. So I don't believe that you should be fired. I think you should continue your job. I'll take back my comments I've made to a number of people, 'cause you certainly gained experience from this. So hopefully we don't lose the money we paid you to, to learn this, that you can apply it in the future. So, I don't know if this made sense or not, but really I'm happy about that whole situation. I just thought if you wanna put it to bed now, then you can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other?
That concludes our speakers.
Okay, I believe that takes us to council agenda, uh, I'm sorry, to council agency comments. Anybody have any comments? Do you have? No?
Not tonight.
Well, I do. Glad you all, I'll use your time. I, I really hope that this carries through to those of you who spoke and those of you who would have liked to have spoken. I asked a question tonight to my community, to my city, and the question is, do you love your city or not? And I think that it's, it's, it's time for the community, the city, and all of us to come together for the good of our city. And I think you can go so far, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Burgess cutting off what he said and said what he said at the very end. And that is, it is really time, folks. And I, 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 for one, believe that anybody, I don't care how professional I'm, I'm a, I, I, I may still have my registration as, as a civil engineer, uh, but I was a registered civil engineer for many years. And that was a very, and you can ask people like, uh, Mr. Williams and, and others who have obtained a registration, that don't come easy. That's big time to get through that. But you know what? We make mistakes. And I never will forget, when I entered civil engineering school, Mr. Johnson made this statement. He said, folks, you need to know that as engineers, that if you make a mistake, everybody's gonna get you. The doctors bury theirs, so nobody bothers them. So I want you to know, Mr. McEwen, that I one hundred percent trust you, just as I did the first day I ever met you. I ain't got no problem with you. Uh, I, I, that was a mistake on his part and ours. I, I think I may be able, maybe even able to say to the council, look, I ain't having no part of this, let's go downstairs. Probably could have done that. But I just wanna say to the community, if you love your community, then let's go. Let's get our head together and put, put it together, let's, yeah, you can beat us for that, you can talk about Ron Smith or any rest of it, but it's time for us to pull our community together and move on, 'cause if we don't, we'll just beat it into the ground. So those are my remarks, and I wanna, uh, at this point, adjourn the meeting in honor of, and I didn't bring that down, well, yes, I do. If it's all right with the council to adjourn the meeting in honor of Frank Arthur Lane, who has been here for, since the turn of the century, I believe, right at about nineteen hundred oh six or somewhere in that, when their whole family came out here and they dug in a tunnel weeds and, along with some other people, and lo and behold, there's a man who has to come up out of the ground. So we appreciate it. Any comments, any of you?
Turn of the last century.
You are absolutely correct. Turn of the last century. You bet.
It's an honor to be able to adjourn in his name. Really a great man.
Thank you so very much. City manager, anything else? Staff, anybody, anything? Okay, we are adjourned until February twenty-sixth, six P M. in this room.